We're just getting our livestream going and then the meeting will start. We're just getting our livestream going and then the meeting will start. I'm sorry, that's my. Okay, Mr. Feinberg. We are ready to start.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the July 30th. I can't believe it's July 30th, 2020 Board Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could rise or whatever you'd like to do in the privacy of your own home for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Christen?
Here.
Mr. Pleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Sweeterman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Regal. Just so folks know, we have, at present, we have 143 members of the public observing the meeting. So we certainly thank you for taking time out this evening to attend the meeting. With that, I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the July 23rd, 2020 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Sinta moves.
Second. Menji?
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Anna, how many do you have this evening for us?
We have 10 this evening, Mr. Feinberg.
Okay. We're all ears.
Thank you. The first comment is from Ally Armstrong at 1113 Larchmont Avenue, Haverford, PA. In regard to the anti-racist resolution. Dear Haverford Township School Directors and Dr. Ruchi, I am running to express my strong support for the proposed resolution, calling for the development of an anti-racist school climate by the school board. I applaud board members for committing themselves to this critical effort to make all our district schools safe, affirming, inclusive, and strong learning environments for black students. The need for this resolution is clear and well documented. Nationally, school-based racist hate incidents have escalated across the country. The U.S. Department of Justice data discloses that students in suburban schools are more likely to be victims of hate speech. The Southern Poverty Law Center's report identified 3,265 hate incidents in the fall of 2018 alone, with more than two-thirds of the 2776 responding educators reporting having witnessed a hate or bias incidence in their schools during that first quarter of that school year. ProPublica analyzed three years of media reports and self-reported incidents of hate and bias in K-12 school settings in its project documenting hate. Based on a review of 472 verified accounts, most incidents that took place in schools between January 2015 and December 2017 targeted black and Latinx students, as well as students who are Jewish or Muslim. Our school community is not immune from the systematic and structural racism that pervades our country and and culture. As parents, educators, and community members, we have been disheartened and shocked by by documented incidents of racial bullying and hate crimes that have harmed children of color in our schools. We know that these reports do not begin to capture the daily microaggressions, exclusion, and disrespect that so many of our black and brown children and youth experience, some of which are now being shared through social media by current students, alumni, and parents. Against this backdrop, the proposed resolution is a critical and greatly needed step towards addressing racism and creating an anti-racist culture in our schools. The resolution recognizes the need not to only promptly and appropriately address bullying and hate speech, which are the byproducts of racism, but to examine and address multiple root causes of our current climate, including the absence of educators of color, need for anti-racist professional development training, and the erasure of black history and the lack of diversity in the curriculum. Importantly, the resolution centers the task of critically reviewing and revising all school district policies and practices through an anti-racist and equity lens. Other school districts across the Commonwealth have recognized this as a key action required to address the systematic and structural racism that exists within school communities. The resolution also acknowledges the need to include diverse voices and perspectives of staff, students, families, and community members who have been directly harmed by racial discrimination and marginalization in order to craft effective reforms that will create and sustain safe and affirming learning environments where all students are supported to learn and thrive. For these reasons, I urge the School Board of Haverford Township School District to adopt this resolution and begin the essential work of creating a strong, affirming, anti-racist school climate. Thank you for your commitment to this important endeavor. Sincerely, Allison Armstrong, HHS graduate of 2000 and parent of two children currently enrolled in Chatham Park Elementary School. Our next comment is from Steve Young of 22 Castle Rock Drive. In this difficult time, I believe that children's mental health should be one of our biggest concerns. Getting our students back into some type of normalcy should be one of our paramount goals. The best way to get our children back into normalcy and mainstream is to have them go back into the classroom, learning, participating in activities, and athletics. After watching the previous school board meetings, I have grave concerns that some of our board members are not voting what is best interest for the children's mental health. I believe that we should trust the administration that we have hired and put in place to guide us through these difficult times. I believe that our administration has done extensive research and due diligence to put our children in the best situations, free from harm, but at the same time trying to put some normalcy back into our children's lives. We have to have faith and trust administrators that we have hired to guide us during these ever-changing times. I would urge our school board, that our community has voted into office, to vote what is right for the children's mentally and physically and not vote for a personal political agenda. The next comment is on the reopening plan from Kate Lenahan and Alex Brophy at 133 East Benedict Avenue. Dear School Board Members, my wife Kate Lenahan and I live at 133 East Benedict Avenue, and we have a soon-to-be third grader at Chestnut Wald Elementary School. Many of us know someone who has been infected with COVID-19. For me, it was Edwin. Edwin and I grew up together in the New York suburbs where his parents owned a local restaurant. We lost touch over the years, but the two of us caught up not too long ago at our high school reunion. Edwin told me that he had recently begun to run the family restaurant, as his parents were now retired. When COVID shutdowns began in mid-March, Edwin kept his restaurant open for takeout and delivery, as many other restaurant owners did at the time. But in early April, I learned that Edwin had been hospitalized with COVID-19 and placed on a ventilator. Not long after Edwin was hospitalized, Edwin's parents learned that they were also infected with COVID. Only a few days later, Edwin's father died at the same hospital where Edwin was still fighting for his life. Edwin continued to survive on a ventilator and induced coma for about a month more, until he too passed away on May 9th, the day before Mother's Day. Edwin was only 43 years old. His mother survived COVID, but she lost both her husband and her only son. Why am I telling the story of Edwin? Because COVID is real and it can be deadly. COVID spread is rapidly increasing throughout our community, and the safest thing for us all to do hasn't changed since March. Stay home. I don't know for sure whether Edwin contracted COVID at his restaurant, but he apparently decided that his customers' employees needed him, and he was either unable or unwilling to just stay home. I do not envy this decision you have to make tonight as school board members. It is an excruciating decision that requires you to balance many weighty considerations. But after balancing those same considerations, many school districts in our region have recently decided that reopening schools to live instruction is too risky at this time. These districts include Philadelphia, Springfield, Downingtown, Allentown, and Norristown. A list that will certainly grow in the coming days. To that end, I watched a video that was recently posted on YouTube by Superintendent of the Norristown School District, Christopher Dormer, explaining his district's decision to go 100% virtual through the end of 2020. I found this one part of the superintendent Dormer's explanation to be particularly poignant. Excuse me. I will not be the superintendent who puts anyone, not one child, not one staff member in harm's way. I cannot in good conscience allow any reopening model that increases the risk for illness, infection, or in a worst-case scenario, someone dying. Kate and I want nothing more than for our son to be able to safely return to Chestnut Wald. He tremendously misses his teachers and friends. However, while COVID fortunately does not seem to affect children to the same extent it affects adults, a recent study from South Korea revealed that children aged 10 to 19 are just as affected as spreading COVID-19 as adults are. So while our children will mostly survive any COVID infections, what about their teachers, their school bus drivers, their lunch attendants? The district's teachers and staff will mostly feel obligated to return to their schools if that's what the school board decides tonight. Many of them are very scared to return, but like Edwin, they largely feel they do not have a choice. Sadly, our country now has over 150,000 other tragic stories like Edwin's. But to the school board members of Haverford Township, you do have the choice to make sure that there will be no new tragic stories that begin with a teacher, staff member, or student returning to a public school in Haverford Township. Delaware County currently has the highest per capita rate of the new COVID cases in the state. Because there is no way to currently reopen our schools to live instruction without increasing the risk of COVID spreading in our school communities and in our community as a whole, Kate and I respectfully urge you to vote against the district's reopening plan and insist on the district at least beginning of the school year with 100% online instruction, subject to reassessment once our region's infection numbers stop rapidly increasing. At the very least, we believe that tonight's vote on the reopening plan should be tabled for at least a week, while the recent sharp increase in local cases is fully considered and the input of public health experts, such as Dr. Brennan and Dr. Rubin, is updated. Thank you for your time and service to our community. Respectfully yours. Okay. This is kind of an email we got today, but it's kind of built on an email that was sent during the week. A letter in support of your plan from Rich Schmeis at 303 Bealy Road, Haverford, PA. To the Haverford School Board and Dr. Maureen Ruchi, I just wanted to let you know my wife and I support your current plan and think it's a great compromise. Also, there's a lot more people that support it, but just like giving a new review at a restaurant, you're more prone to talk or write about a bad experience and talk about a good one. I have two kids in elementary school at Chatham Park. By the way, I love Dr. Whitehead, and I understand you have a tough road. No matter what your solution is, there is going to be a group of people not happy with your decision. I got invited to this group on Facebook called Haverford Parents for Responsible Reopening, and I don't agree with what people are saying there. Nothing is going to be perfect. I would say a good portion of the people never watched your video fully and understand all the facts. I grew up in Westchester and have friends that teach in the Westchester School District, Downingtown, Great Valley, and TNE. Majority of them want to go back to school and teach, even in these circumstances. You are giving our community an option. If you want to send your kids to school, send them. If not, there's an online option. It is great. Once again, I just want to say thank you. I support you, and thank you for your hard work you are doing. You have my permission to reference me in support of you. Also, I have a close friend that is the head of the Department of CHOP. Today, the New England Journal of Medicine just put this out. It's an article titled "Reopening Primary Schools During the Pandemic." She is in support of grade schools opening, and you can see what amount of people in the survey, the majority supports your plan. The next one is "School Opening Public Comment." Hello, my name is Ron Bytown. My family and I live on 208 Wickford Road in Haverford. I first wanted to thank the school board, Dr. Ruchi, all the teachers, and the administrative staff who are working so hard to ensure that our children have a safe re-entry to school this fall. Within the last month, cases of the coronavirus have increased 398% in Delaware County. And they cited an article from the Inquirer. With schools set to open in five weeks, our county is currently trending upward instead of steadying. My question to the board is, will there be a coordinated effort to test teachers and students each week once school opens, or was a decision made to not incorporate testing into the opening plan due to the cost or the slow turnaround time of the tests? In comparing how other countries have opened their schools, some German cities gave free tests out to students and teachers. They took the test every four days and had the results back within 24 hours. He also cites an article about Germany's successful testing of students and teachers. If testing is not possible, I do wish to express my concern for the possibility of having our middle school children eat lunch at school. As a parent, I do not wish for our middle school children to have lunch at school, and I am concerned that the risk of having masks off to eat is too much of a risk. Thank you for your time, Ron Bytown. We have another school reopening comment from Catherine Wang at 1610 B Road. Comment in favor of in-person reopening for elementary-age children. While I understand that the five-day in-person model is not currently on the table, I nevertheless write in support of that model, or one in which elementary-age children attend school more than two days per week. Studies have shown that the COVID transmission rate is lower for children age 10 and under, which coincides with the age of elementary school in HSD. Studies and research also show that younger children have the greatest need for live, in-person instruction, as well as for the social and emotional growth provided by in-person interaction with their peers. Conversely, older children who may be more readily transmit COVID have greater familiarity with online learning and remote assignments and can better adjust to remote learning. To the extent possible, outdoor spaces could be used for additional distancing for elementary-age children, at least as weather permits in the early months of the school year. Heat tents could be used as cold weather approaches. Any family that does not feel comfortable with this model could opt out. Courses could be recorded or simulcast on all remote learners, and teachers could hold a separate help session for those students. I realize this is an added burden on the teachers, but many of us have taken on added burdens during this pandemic. To the extent budget concerns might prohibit this plan, we are forced to live in a school district in which many families are able and likely and likely would be glad to voluntarily contribute to defray the cost in order to further our children's education. My concern is the precedent we are setting by not opening the schools until it is safe. It will never be 100% safe, even with the vaccine, just as schools were never 100% safe prior to COVID. Where do we draw the line and say it is safe enough? Catherine Wang. This is from Kimberly Long.
If I just want to ensure that the emails that you are reading are emails that have come in to be read publicly at the board meeting?
Yeah, these came to either Kathy Schwartz, or they came to the public comment email address.
Okay.
Some of them were forwarded this afternoon from Kathy. This is from, this is public comment for the 7:30 meeting, Kimberly Long, 642 Beechwood Drive. Hello, and thank you for taking the time to read my comment. I am a parent of two children at Chestnut Wald Elementary. I am also a kindergarten teacher in a neighboring district. With the COVID numbers rising in our country, how safe is it for our children and their teachers to be in school? As a parent, I have the choice to have my children at home, learning virtually, but teachers do not. By opening schools, you are asking these teachers to put work before family. When there is exposure in a class, where is the teacher supposed to go if not to expose his or her family? How has that teachers have been deemed essential workers without proper medical and pandemic training? As a teacher, I understand the necessity of school, and I know teachers are essential to provide an education. However, this can be done virtually. We are in a pandemic, and safety for all involved should be the number-one priority. Give the teachers this time to work on their virtual classrooms instead of having them try to wrap their heads around following all the safety protocols that will follow them to enforce. Time in the classroom in September will not be spent socializing or working together. The responsibility of keeping these kids masked and socially distanced will fall on the teacher. Please put yourself in their shoes and walk their day following these safety measures before forcing them to do it. Thank you. This is a public school board meeting comment regarding reopening of schools from Chad Urban, 205 East Manoa Road. School Board Members and Dr. Ruchi, last week, the superintendent of the Downingtown School District made the announcement that their school district will begin the school year online and will stay online through November 5th. The superintendent made this decision based on the data she received from the PA Department of Education and the Chester County Department of Health. Her primary concern was the safety of the students and staff. I admire her courage in making this decision. This stands in stark contrast to our school district where our superintendent has stated she would never bring a plan to the school board for 100% online learning. You are obviously listening to the same guidance that is being provided, but it also seems that you're waiting for someone else to tell you what to do. You have the ability to look at the same data and make a decision on whether or not to open. You can present 100% online learning as an option to the school board for a vote along with the hybrid model. You do not have to wait for state authorities to direct you on how to proceed. Teachers are also concerned about their safety when returning to school. Seeing that there is an option on the table for in-class lunches for the middle school defeats much of the safety measures you put in place in the proposed hybrid model. You are asking for students and teachers to be unmasked in a room together for an extended period of time just to allow for a few extra minutes of class later in the day. If you do end up voting for a hybrid model, I ask that we take safety of the students and staff into consideration and not vote for any plan that allows school lunches. When making a decision like this, you have to be realistic in how much risk you're willing to take on. If you choose to reopen, even with this hybrid model, you are saying that you are comfortable with even a smaller number of students, their families, teachers, and school staff being affected by COVID-19 and suffering any of the consequences of that infection. Please keep this in mind as you make your decision. This is from Brian and Karen Chevett at 5 Nancy Drive, Haverford, PA. They have two children in the middle school and one in elementary. Please consider putting siblings to the district in the same group so that they can go to school on the same days and are home on the same days. Thank you. That's in regards to the cohorts. And our last comment is from Laura Sweeney at 165 Shelburne Road. Will any effort be made across schools to keep siblings on the same cohort, specifically elementary and middle schools? Thank you for all your hard work everyone is doing. Sincerely, Laura Sweeney.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
I think, you know, you can see that the range of comments and opinions that we've received is pretty broad, and that's representative of the emails and comments that we have received over the last several months. So thank you, everybody, for your comments. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, and we'll start off by welcoming Ken Matthews, our construction project engineer from CB Development regarding, I guess, Linwood and perhaps the high school. Ken?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'll keep it pretty focused, and they have a very long agenda. So for the high school, things are moving along well. We're going to be receiving the 95% construction documents in the next week. So that over the month of August, we'll review, do any final tweaks, finalize them. So that come September, we have a bid package put together, and the project can go out to bid this fall with the intent of awarding this fall and starting construction in winter of 2021. We did receive our MPDES permit, which is is a big milestone. It's the Erosion and Sentimentation Control Permit from the DEP. So that's great news. So all in all, everything's moving along very well at the high school. Did anybody have any questions or comments about the high school?
Just a clarification. You said winter 2021. Is that the January end of 21?
Yeah. It could, December, January, it just depends on, you know, really what meeting we end up awarding, and then how quickly the contractor can mobilize to the site. So sometime by January, it should be breaking ground.
In the next few months, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't still almost a year and a half away.
Yeah, yes, it's only four months away. That's correct. All right. Great. So now moving on to Linwood. Everything continues to move very well. You can see the exterior facade of the building going up. Inside the building, drywall is being done. They started painting over the last two weeks. Windows started yesterday, the day before. So you're going to really see the building take shape over the next two months on the outside. And, you know, it's hard to believe, but the building, you know, contractually, they're supposed to be done on February 1st. Right now, the updated schedule is showing about three weeks. We're about three weeks behind. But if you remember, we were shut down for six weeks for COVID-19. So that's actually, you know, we're doing quite well. It wasn't a day-for-day loss. We were frankly a little bit ahead of schedule before the shutdown, so that's good. And we're going to monitor it month to month. We're going to keep pushing the contractors with the hope of getting complete as close to the original February 1st date as possible. So there's no real issues to speak of. Everything else is moving along well. So as far as progress, we're in good shape. And then this evening, we do have a handful of change orders that I'd like to quickly go through. Four of the five actually have to do with the COVID-19 quote-unquote delays and inefficiencies. The good news is that, you know, I think we're in very good shape as far as that's concerned. Basically, all the contractors for May and June have submitted some costs that they feel they're owed, but really come July and forward, we see the costs as being very minimal. In fact, as far as JBM Mechanical, they have the plumbing and HVAC contract starting in June and moving forward. They've agreed that unless CDC guidelines change, there's no cost for loss of time. Essentially, they've all submitted a little bit, especially starting in May, wearing the mask, all these protocols. They were all saying, hey, we had, each man had X amount of minutes lost per day due to these restrictions. But now all the workers are really getting used to how they function. The masks, they're kind of getting used to it. So we really are going to see those costs dwindle dramatically and really should not be a big burden to the district as far as additional change orders to the project. So this evening, you can see Wescott has a change order for $10,904. JBM has two change orders, one for $4,0978, another one for, yes.
Sorry, I just want, you're talking about the change orders tonight. I just, when you say you can see, they can't see. It's not, it's not.
It's not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's part of your update. So I just, what's he talking about?
So yes, there's five change orders that are on the agenda to approve, four of which are regarding the COVID-19 costs that I was just speaking of. And then one of the change orders is a credit for $18,000 from Steubner. We had included costs for them to pay for the electricity during construction, and they're really not going to use that much, so we're taking that credit back out of their contract. So the other change orders, again, with COVID, I think we're in great shape as far as that's concerned. And there will be a few more coming along with this, and there could be some minor ones month to month. But we're finishing those negotiations now with the contractor, and we'll have to monitor. And again, fingers crossed, this is assuming no further shutdowns occur or no other government imposed sanctions on, you know, construction and how we have to function. So for right now, we do feel like things are moving along well, and we'll continue to do so. So with that being said, did anybody have any questions about about the project, change orders, or where we stand?
Any questions or comments from the board? Ken, I drove by a couple days ago. It's looking great. It's really exciting to, you know, remember that just being a field.
Yes, very much so.
And we'll mention, none of those change orders are on the agenda this evening. We're not voting on anything, but I'd be happy to take as many of those $18,000 credits as you're able to scrape together.
And we will keep pushing for them, yes.
They'll be on next week.
Great, no problem at all. Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening. Good luck.
Thanks, Ken.
Dr. Ruchi?
Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. March 13th, it's quite a long time ago. That's when we began our transition to virtual learning at that time. And we wondered how many weeks might pass until we would return to school. The thought of not returning until the fall became a harsh reality for everyone later in April and was met with much disappointment by both students, staff, and parents. Throughout all of the planning that has ensued since that time, you have on many occasions heard me say, "The guidance has changed," or "New guidance has been issued." And each time, we adjusted our plan accordingly, and you came right along with us with those adjustments. Between July 2nd and July 29th, four board meetings have been attended by over 780 individuals via Zoom or YouTube. Our meetings consisted of updates provided by district administrators, as well as health experts. Those videos, board meetings, video messages, expert presentations have been posted on our website and collectively viewed over 17,600 times. Five live community information sessions were attended by over 1,340 individuals in our community. Four live staff sessions were attended by over 300 individuals. Our website has been updated on a weekly basis to expand the responses to questions that were included in our FAQ. Nine communication or update email messages were Nine communication or update email messages were sent to the community and staff. And this is all between July 2nd and tonight. 4,742 students are accounted for in our parent preference survey. 847 have indicated a preference for Haverford Online. 3,895 have indicated a preference for the hybrid model. The decisions that our families have made and must now make for their children is not an easy one. The level of involvement in all of the aforementioned activity is just another indication of the value that this community places on the education of its children and the concern held for all involved in the process of providing that education. All of this takes us to today, July 30th, the day the Philadelphia Inquirer ran an article and ABC News featured Delaware County as one of three hotspots for coronavirus in the Commonwealth. We're all wondering now, what does that mean for us as a school system? I will ask tonight for you to continue your consideration of the health and safety plan that you have heard about and helped to shape with your questions and suggestions. This plan identifies a hybrid model, which I believe we will find ourselves in at some time, whether that is August 31st or sometime later in the year. By nature, the plan is intended to be an overview. It is not intended to map out the finer logistics and details, many of which will be unique to each level, elementary, middle or high school. Approval of the plan will indicate a finer, will initiate a finer level of planning on the part of our building level administrators. On several occasions since March 13th and before, I have informed you of county level meetings with area superintendents, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, members of Delaware County Council, the Office of Emergency Management Services and the Chester County Health Department. Representatives of many of those groups gathered first thing this morning to learn more about the identification of Delaware County as a hotspot and what that will, can or may mean for our schools. We have, as I'm sure you do, many questions. We've asked about the metrics and/or thresholds that will be needed to, that we need to meet in order to transition to an entirely virtual plan. And conversely, what those metrics or thresholds might need to be in order to return to hybrid. I believe those officials in attendance heard the concerns expressed by the superintendents. We are, as has been mentioned many times, educators, not health professionals. When it comes to public health, we need more specific metrics to guide those decisions. Those conversations will continue over the next several days. With that being said, I believe it is yet again imperative that I remind everyone of the fluidity of this virus and the potential for the need to shift very quickly to a virtual model. However, our request remains. We ask you to pass this evening the hybrid plan, a plan that you've spent a significant amount of time familiarizing yourself with. In the event that we decide to transition to an entirely virtual model, it is one box which needs to be checked on the document. It does not require another document as this plan does not call for a description of how instruction takes place. It focuses upon the identification of the model in which instruction takes place and primarily on health and safety precautions. Think back to the data that I shared with you when I started my remarks. I want to thank you, our board members, for the dedication that you have devoted to this very important work, to the administrative team for the tireless energy and the many staff members who have asked questions, made suggestions and pushed our thinking. And to our parents and guardians, your input has been important. We value your partnership. We know that there is no easy decision that is going to fit the needs of every family. We continue to work with health experts and educational professionals to prepare, prepare plans that prioritize the health and safety of our staff and students as well as the social, emotional wellbeing of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruscie. And I'd just like to echo those thanks to my fellow board members, to the administration, all our, all our staff that have been working on this plan for the last four months. And I would just ask our community to, you know, be aware that, you know, this can change at the drop of a hat. And so it's just, it's the world we're living in at the moment. Next, I'd like to welcome Mr. Mike Mullin, President of HDEA for some comments. Mike, it's good to see you. It's been a while. Hope all is well.
Hello, Mr. Feinberg. I think my camera and my microphone are on. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Ruscie, members of the board, members of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. My name is Michael Mullin. I am an English teacher at Haverford High. I came to Haverford in 1995 after having spent eight years teaching in the Bronx, New York. So I've been at this for 33 years. I can't believe it either. In my head, I'm still 25. I'm also the president of the Haverford Township Education Association, commonly known as HDEA or the Teachers Union. HDEA represents the 430 certificated education professionals who serve the school district of Haverford Township. But HDEA represents more than teachers. We also represent guidance counselors, librarians, nurses, psychologists and therapists. So if you need a certificate to do your job in the district and you're not an administrator, HTA represents you. HDEA is affiliated with PSEA, the Pennsylvania State Education Association, and with NEA, the National Education Association. The HTA Executive Committee, the board that I work for, has directed me on behalf of our members to share with you what we've been discussing, what we're concerned about and how we plan to move forward toward a school opening on August 31st that will be the most challenging and uncertain of our careers. The officers and reps have spoken to our members through Google Meet chats, phone calls, email threads, and they have told us what is on their minds and what tugs at their hearts. So the executive committee has directed me to address the board, to share these thoughts and concerns with you. So in short, I've been directed to communicate the consensus of the membership. I suspect that what we have been thinking, wondering and feeling is exactly what everyone here, board members, administrators, parents, citizens and students, that what they've been thinking as well and wondering and feeling. So perhaps you'll allow me the liberty of approaching this address as a means for speaking for you as well. We'll only get through this if we stay together. So please understand that my intention here in speaking is to build a community among us and not as a communication from us to an imaginary them. That can never work. So I hope to complete circles rather than draw lines. My hope is that when I'm finished, you will say what my youngest daughter says when she identifies with someone same. The only place, the only place our members want to be on August 31st is our classrooms, our offices, our clinics, our libraries, our gymnasiums, our rehearsal spaces, our fields of play. And we want to be there with our students engaged in the joyful and daring act of teaching and learning. I think that's exactly where the administration, the board, our students, their parents, and I dare say, anyone hearing this address would want us to be as well. We want to be safe while we're there and we want our students to be safe. School is supposed to be a safe place. And our job as educators is to ensure that safety. Most of our anxiety and most of our concern stems from a realization that we can't guarantee that. That irony torments us and yes, even infuriates us. But that's not the end of the story. Nor is it, I submit the sole purpose of my address this evening. The Jesuit priests who taught me at St. Joseph's Prep and at Fordham University challenged their students at every opportunity to first acknowledge the human condition, a condition of doubt, fear, strife, then to respond to that condition, not with more doubt or more fear or more strife, but with the uniquely human capability to heal that condition with faith, with hope and with mercy. So I will acknowledge our members' condition, but I will also tell you how we will respond to that condition, since all of us are in that same condition. And my hope is that you will respond in that way with us. Together is the only way we will get through this. And it's the only way we can show our kids how to get through this as well. Now, some of our members have expressed their doubts. They doubt that any plans and guidance set down on paper by anyone, the state, the Department of Health, even the board, will be workable once the bell rings and the doors open. They doubt that any plan can address or foresee the infinity of subtle and complex details and choices that govern our, govern our daily lives as educators. Details that are perhaps an ineffable mystery to anyone who has never done our jobs. A few of our members doubt that any plan can work well enough to prevent going to an all virtual model sooner rather than later, especially given the recent spike in cases in Delaware County. Now, I don't want the board to receive those doubts as an indictment of their work or their wisdom. I invite them to take them as kind of liberating. Ironically, the uncertainty and doubt surrounding this situation may be proof that they don't have to, they don't have to pass a perfect plan because they can't. As my mother often says, St. Francis of Assisi himself could appear and be unable to solve this. The board will approve as good a plan as they can, one that cannot be perfect. Perfect is the enemy of the good. Voltaire said that. I didn't make that up. Now, we acknowledge doubt, but our members choose to respond to that doubt with faith. Perhaps not faith in a plan, but faith in each other. Everyone here that somehow, in a way that we have not even imagined yet, we're going to help each other, encourage each other and protect each other and our students. Many of our members are afraid. They fear for their health, even their lives. They fear for the health of their families and their students. They are afraid that their work will never be the same and all the joys that accompany that work will never be experienced again. They fear the countless number of questions that begin with what if, or what happens when. They fear that they will not have the right answers to those questions. They fear that some of the answers to those questions will be unbearable. We acknowledge those fears, but our members choose to respond with hope. Now, hope is a word that's been devalued. Today, people take hope to mean some naive expectation that everything will miraculously work out despite the clear evidence to the contrary. But hope is not about the future. It's about the present and it's not an emotion. It's an action. So we hope for a cure. We hope for a vaccine. We hope that school will go back to the way it was. We hope for better days, but that hope cannot be some wistful glance ahead at the destination. Hope is the steps on the road that we take. So we are afraid, but we walk in hope. We also acknowledge that some of us, all of us, may need to be cared for in different ways as we walk together, ways that no plan could foresee or forestall. Some of us, our members, our students, their families, they may need the space, the room or the time to respond to those fears in the hope that once they are addressed, we can all be together again. Some of us may be able to walk ahead while others may need to stop and rest or ride in the wagon for a while or even be carried. Our members have experienced conflict and strife, both internal and among ourselves. We have disagreed about solutions, about how resources should be allocated, about who has priority when it comes to accommodating needs and situations and conditions. Some of our members want the district to start virtually while others think a hybrid plan is the least of all the evils. Some of us are not sure. I change my mind every 10 minutes about what plan would be best. Some of us are trying to decide if their medical conditions may force them to retire, to seek a leave or to simply resign. Some of our members are struggling with the demands of their jobs and the needs of their children and parents. All of this should sound familiar. Everyone hearing this address is dealing with the same things. Now, the cynic would respond to conflict and strife with more conflict than strife, with blame and backbiting, with escalation and despair. But we, we choose to respond with mercy and charity. We acknowledge the strife. We do not shrink from it, but we will not let it consume us. An English teacher moment, if you'll allow me. In my hero, John Steinbeck's The Grapes of Wrath, the Joad family experiences every possible version of conflict, strife and danger. Every bad thing that one could think of happens to the Joads. You can read the novel for the details. But at the end, on the very last page, after everything that has befallen the Joads, Rose of Sharon, Tom's sister, faces her fear and commits a selfless, hopeful, merciful act. She feeds a starving man. You can read the novel to find out how she does that. It's both provocative and beautiful. And the novel ends there. Steinbeck doesn't tell us what happens to the Joads. It doesn't show us the floodwaters receding or the depression ending or the happy destinies of the characters. Perhaps Steinbeck didn't know himself. Perhaps this ending is his acknowledgement that we live in challenging and even dangerous situations and can't know the future, let alone plan for it. So the novel ends not with a guarantee, but with an affirmation of how to respond by treating each other with acceptance, with assistance, with mercy. At the end of the day, we, the members of HTA and all of us, we have to be models for our students. We have to show them that making plans is important, but that plans are empty without authentically human actions to make them work. We have to show them that people need different things at different times and that we have to honor those needs. We have to show them how to acknowledge doubt, fear and conflict. But we also have to show them how to choose faith, hope and mercy. Academics will follow after that. The board has to approve a plan this evening, a task that I do not envy. While I cannot offer guarantees, I cannot offer hard and fast answer to make their duty easy and clear. In short, I can offer no certainty at all. I can offer the actions and responses of the humans. I can offer the actions and responses of the humans who are the members of the Haverford Township Education Association. And I invite everyone, the administrators, the board, parents, students and citizens to walk with us with all of our doubts, fears and disagreements stuffed in trunks in the back of the caravan. As long as we stay together, we'll prevail. We love our district. We love our schools. We love our profession. We love our students. No force in the universe can separate us from that. We won't be perfect. We won't know the answers. Neither will you. What you do have is our commitment to and our faith in our great district, the great parents and families that we work with every day and our awesome, wonderful students. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, I've had the pleasure of your acquaintance for the past 21 years and I place great value on it. And this evening, I'd like to thank you for your, your message of hope, of wisdom and your good counsel. Please take that thanks back to all of your members.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I appreciate that.
Okay, next item on our agenda is that plan that we've had references to several times this evening. Nicole, you're up.
I'm trying to start my video, but I cannot seem to do it. I think Annie, you might have to start it for me. I'll get started without my video. It's fine. Everyone can hear me though, right?
Yes, Nicole.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Oh, there we go. There we go. Okay. How I got, I have to follow up Mr. Mike Mullen. I don't know. Should have asked you a little bit earlier in this evening's agenda. So I'm going to talk about the health and safety plan. We've been talking about it for a few weeks now in our board meetings. And I just want to let everybody know that this plan, it's a template from PDE. So the requirements of the plan come from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This plan is not about instruction. There is one item that's about the way you're going to open school where you choose whether it's totally remote, hybrid, scaffold or a full reopen. And then that's where instruction really ends. And then it talks about the details of the health and safety procedures that will be in place. So every week we go over, you know, the different guidelines we follow. And every week they change, it seems about an hour before our school board meeting. So we continue to look at the guidance from PDE, which was updated on July 16th, which was a school board meeting day. Where we have a draft update from the Chester County Department of Health, but it has not been finalized yet. We looked at the American Academy of Pediatrics, the REL work that we spoke about a week or two ago, the World Health Organization, the CDC guidelines, which again, I believe that's another board meeting date that that was updated. And we also use environmental consultants. So we look at these documents and as Dr. Rishi said, this document has to be fluid. This plan has to be fluid because we get new guidance on what seems like a weekly basis. And so the plan must be fluid to meet the new guidance we receive. And you can go to the next slide. So how do we engage in this work? This document, without anything written in it from PDE, was 20 pages long. So there was a lot that needed to go into it. So we had to divide up this work amongst different groups. We formed different teams based on the sub, subsection of the document. We had mixed teams of different employee groups. We held employee drop-in sessions to get feedback. You saw every week at our board meetings, we were seeking guidance from our experts during the board meetings, but then also in meetings held, you know, countywide and outside of the board meeting. We surveyed our community and we had outlines posted, which the general criteria that's in this document for public comment that went out in both an email and on our website. For this to work, and we'll get into the work in a moment. I had to echo what Mr. Mullen said. This has to be a community effort. Last night, we had the pupil services live session and I spoke about the need to be community minded. And if anything, if there's anything we learned from this pandemic is that we really need to be community minded. You know, I say, you know, Mike Mullen said, had some quotes that I can't even get near what Mike Mullen could say. But in our house, we say, we instead of me, and that's what we need to go forward with. So this is an effort of everyone to make this happen. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so here are some details about cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting and ventilating. You know, we're going to use the EPA approved disinfectants. This comes from our environmental consultant's recommendation, also the Chester County Department of Health and the other health guidelines we follow. Really, all the guidance we see promotes frequent cleaning throughout the day, shutting off water fountains so children can't put their mouth on that. That should not be a surprise that we would want to avoid that. We have bottle filling stations installed installed in our buildings throughout the district and buildings that did not have them are getting them installed now. We're going to be following cleaning protocol and buses will be cleaned. Bus windows will be opened. So we're really following pretty much all of the guidance in this section here. There's a lot of guidance on cleaning. If you can go to the next slide. Now, as far as ventilating goes, so what we know, you know, we know something about the coronavirus that, you know, it transmits through droplets. And a lot of that social distancing is, you know, the thought that those droplets fall to the ground between three and six feet. What we hear, you know, there's still debate on to whether or not it transmits through aerosols, which are much smaller droplets that could suspend the air. But the mitigation for aerosol transmission is actually things we can do. So good ventilation, we have outside professionals that have evaluated our forced air systems and deem them sufficient. We, ASHRAE is the, I hope I don't mess this up, American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers. And they have rules for, they've put out guidance for HVAC for proper ventilation. So this second bullet, the first one refers to running the system two hours before anybody would occupy that space. And the second bullet refers to the time the air changes over. So that's 15 cubic feet per minute and 15 times in an hour in a space. And so our HVAC system can do this. In buildings that don't have these systems, we've consulted with environmental consultants and we will use open windows and fans. And that will provide the proper ventilation in those buildings. You can go to the next slide. So a large portion of this document is about social distancing and safety protocols. So what we are highlighting is that the choice to recommend the hybrid model is to achieve that six feet of social distancing. That cannot happen with all of our children in a building at once. We are also moving forward with the cohort model at the elementary school and middle schools or elementary schools and middle school to keep kids together and to limit, you know, students walking around hallways in large groups. We have, you know, unified arts and specials pushing into classrooms. We're going to maintain six feet of social distancing, promote good hand washing. We have hand sanitizers being installed all over the district and in every classroom if they don't have them already. So really, this is what's going to make our classrooms look a bit different. And it's going to make instruction look a bit different. So students will be here, you know, possibly Monday and have a virtual learning day. It's going to look different, but we still have our amazing teachers. Mike Mullen is one of them who are going to do everything they can to make it a wonderful experience for our students, even though the nature of the hybrid model and cohorting will be different for our students. And you can go to the next slide. This continues more of the social distancing and safety protocol section of the document. We all saw the pictures. If you've been watching these board meetings of Manoa, the cafeteria there with the eight foot tables so that we can have six feet of social distancing. Students and staff must be six feet apart during lunchtime so they can remove their mask and eat. They cannot face each other. We'll have packaged lunches available, a packaged lunch available. So students won't be, you know, going down the line to grab different items to put on a tray. They will be prepackaged lunches at the high school and middle school. Those lunches will be going home with students. One of the great things that come out of the feedback was that, you know, a parent mentioned, well, how do students who choose Haverford online but received free and reduced lunch get lunch? So we're looking at that now. Obviously we'll make that happen. We're just working on the logistics of that. But with the board's permission, I would like to add that into that section on cafeterias. Because we did talk about, you know, providing lunch for the hybrid model where students would take home breakfast and lunch for the next day. But we did not include a statement about the Haverford online students. So I would like to include that. So then we talk a little bit about recess and students are going to be playing in their same classroom cohorts. And the recess yard is going to be divided a bit. So students will remain with their cohort and we'll have supervision there to make sure that happens. And you can go on to the next slide. Of course, the thing that's probably difficult at the elementary level is a limit of sharing of items because students like to share everything they have, but we're going to limit the sharing of items between students at the high school, middle school lockers are not going to be used. Anybody who's been in our building knows how thin our lockers are and how close students would have to stand together to access their lockers. We're changing the supply list to help limit that sharing. And I just want to point out that we're going to utilize donations for students who need supplies because the supply list may include more items than typical. And we've been informed that the Haverford Township Education Foundation actually supplied gift cards to Staples for our families. So our home at school visitors, if people don't know, have been working this summer to make sure families are getting access to food and things that they need. And so they've been distributing those gift cards and working with families. So I really appreciate their effort because they've been working throughout the summer, which they typically are not scheduled to work in the summer. We're also going to stagger schedules between class periods and then also the staggering of arrival and dismissal time. And so, you know, that might look like at the elementary level, when students go to lunch, one class might leave and then a couple of minutes later, another class might go down so that the whole grade isn't going down at the same time. And you can go on to the next slide. Okay, so this is where we need help from the community. Like I said, this is a community effort and we need help making sure that we are maintaining six feet of social distance at bus stops. So if you're with your child at a bus stop, it would be really helpful to, you know, help monitor that social distancing there. Our bus drivers are going to be asked to do a bit more this year. And so anything we can do to help them, one thing that will be reiterated frequently is that please do not send children who are sick to our schools or to get onto a bus. That puts that bus driver in a difficult position. So please keep your children home if they are sick. We're limiting to students per seat on buses. And we're hoping that would, we would have two students of the same family possibly. And there's just some revisions to like parent pickups because we can't have parents coming into the building, late arrivals. We're not allowing visitors into the building. The only non-staff members, non-students that we have will have in the building will be contracted service providers. So that might be, you know, a B CBA from, you know, an IU or another service provider. You know, and some of their information here, like we said, we're trying to meet with childcare providers. We also have childcare providers that house before and after care in our buildings. And we do have a DCIU program at our high school and they're going to comply with our health and safety plan when they're in our buildings. Go to the next slide. Okay, so the next section of the document is monitoring student and staff health. So again, providing that ongoing communication to please stay home when you're sick, whether you're a student, a staff member. We really don't want to be put in the position to have to send someone home because they came to school when they should not have. And then possibly whatever impact that would have on others in the building. So please be mindful to stay home, keep your children home if they're sick. There's going to be some education on what the symptoms are of COVID-19 amongst staff, parents, you know, students, you know. We really want people to stay home if they have any of those symptoms. You know, staff and students will perform the home health screening. So, you know, that's going through a list of questions. The Chester County Department of Health is supposed to send us some updated guidance on that of what those questions may be. Now they have changed. From what I understand, the last time I spoke to them, they were changing slightly. So you'll notice in the document, I'm now linking to the Chester County Department of Health document because it has changed twice in the time that I had written the, had the whole document ready to send, changed it and then it was ready to send again and then it changed again. So we're just going to link those things into the document. So it's more fluid and can change. It's more flexible. We're all, again, this is where the community comes in, the Haverford community as a whole. We all have to play active roles in monitoring for symptoms. So our children are sick, we need to keep them home. We see children in our class who are sick, we have to send them to the nurse. So we all have to do that. And you can go to the next slide. Again, monitoring student and staff health. If there are staff members or students who are symptomatic, evaluations would be conducted by the school nurse, but that's also when we would be calling the Chester County Department of Health. They are really going to guide us through every step if we think someone has COVID-19 symptoms. So if we think someone has those symptoms as a, you know, suspected case or a known case, if we're told that someone was there on Monday and now they're not in school the next day and it's because they tested positive, we contact the Chester County Department of Health and they guide us. We are not healthcare professionals and we need the guidance of the Department of Health to make these decisions. We are going to have additional PPE for our nurses. I actually got an email from one of our nurses today with some suggestions for some items we could use. But that will be available for our nurses. And if you could go to the next slide. So there's another section called other considerations. And in that section, it talks about offering a remote learning program for any child who would want to choose that. And that's our Haverford online program. Again, there's guidance, the FFCRA and FMLA for leaves. Our student attendance policy is actually pretty flexible. I'm wondering if we'll get more guidance from PDE on that as the school year gets closer. But our, our policy is pretty flexible. We, this is very important. So the mask order put out by the Department of Health requires that all students and staff wear face covering. So that, in that order is defined as a mask and/or a face shield. I think we, you know, have seen how effective masks are. You know, we've had some professionals who recommend a mask and a face shield. But in the order, it really is an and/or. So those are both acceptable in our buildings. We have ordered transparent face masks for staff and students with communication needs if they need to see the mouth of someone who's speaking in order to understand what they're saying or for therapy. We have those ordered. So we are taking into consideration the needs of our staff and students as we order this equipment. Thank you. Now here's where the other part of our document where they talk about instruction slightly because it's professional development. We are developing courses for staff and students kind of regarding what's going to change. There's going to be a lot of communication for parents coming from the building level. Once those For parents coming from the building level, once those procedures, those fine details. You know, this document's very like big picture. This is what we're going to do, you know, stagger. Arrival and dismissal. How that's done, the details, that's, that might be different in different buildings. Based on the structure of the building, the car line, you know, how many walkers they have. So those details are going to come and be provided to parents and staff. You know, before the school year starts. Our custodial staff have already been trained to continue to be trained in the cleaning procedures. So that's already been happening. I can tell you if, we all saw the principals' videos. From the last board meeting. And so I'm assuming a lot of, you know, videos like that will be very helpful for our students and families. And I'm sure there's more to come. Okay, Anna, the last slide's about communication. So we have been, Dr. Ruchi mentioned, I don't know how many. Yeah, I have communication documents that have gone out to the public. We've been communicating frequently using our board videos. Emails are sent or posted to the website. We've been translating documents for families that need them using. We use Language Line if we're, you know, making a phone call, we use Talking Points and then. Through the DCIU, we have Language, it's called Language Service Associates. So they can do a little bit more detailed translating for us. And then once we're in school, there's going to be daily communication on the morning announcements about healthy habits. You know, as an educator first, you know, we want our students hearing about the health, it's healthy, you know, doing this is healthy. Not that we're making the school safe by doing this, but it's a healthy habit to do. And so that's why we're doing it. So that small change in wording, it's what our counselors have been working on, things like that over the summer. So that is the, I don't know, 50 some page document in 14 slides. I'm sure there are many questions. So please let me know.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Laura.
I also can't start. Oh, there it goes. Okay, hold on. I don't know why my video is also not starting. Oh, well, it's okay. You can hear me. Last week or the other day, there was some discussion about middle school and whether or not middle school would be able to have. Lunch at the middle school. Is that discussion still on the table or have we set that aside?
Dr. Ruchi, I believe we set this, you want to?
Yes, I would take, I'll take that question. Mr. Haran put forth a very diligent, beyond diligent effort, trying to look to see how that could possibly happen. The, and we know, we knew right from the beginning that the cafeteria would not be sufficient, the way that we're spreading the tables out at the elementary level. It's just too large, even with only half of the student population there. He was able to come up with, you know, a couple of different scenarios. And it really came down to supervision and what, what the environment would be like. That we would be putting the teacher, because we would not have enough, you know, for supervision. And that would sort of go against what we were trying to do in terms of protecting and keeping our teachers safe. So he's going back to his, you know, the original model that has the grab and go available for students.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I had a question about assigned seating. Are we going to be doing assigned seating in any of our classrooms? And is that part of our plan?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Dr. Ruchelina, I believe so. That level of detail is going to come from the principals, but we don't want students sitting in different desks. You know, we want them in the same desk so that we, you know, they're using the same space. So, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And then there was some, in the, in the larger document, there were some. Discussion about athletics and recess and sports and things like that, but there wasn't any discussion of band or choir. Is that, are we still waiting for, for something else for that?
They are not, they're not required as, as part of the plan. He asked Hart to share what he had shared last week so that we could see. As, you know, Mr. Donegey and I said, we wanted him to bring forth a plan. That once we approved it, we would at least share it with the board and the public to instill confidence. You know, in parents when, when they're sending their, their children there. We know that even through our forums, questions came up specifically about band and chorus at the middle school level as well. Ms. Saxa works with our music teachers and already has been in conversation with them about how it might be able to happen at the elementary level. So more will come about that before the school year starts.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, those were my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kristin.
Sorry. So much of this plan is dependent on everyone doing their part. And I think if any one piece of this. You know, falls apart, the whole plan falls apart, basically. Are we asking families and students, given. The need for community, full community participation in this, are we asking them to sign off? On their roles and responsibilities under this, this hybrid plan? It just seems like a tremendous commitment and I want to make sure that our students and families are fully aware of what that commitment entails. And just, you know, have them understand that they need to be very much a part of this. Just, this is what we're asking our teachers and staff to be.
Yeah. Oh, Dr. Ruchi.
That is, that's not part of the plan. We can certainly take, you know, take a look at that, similar to the way they sign off on an acceptable use agreement. We would probably need to get, which is not a problem, but we would probably need to get legal. Advice in terms of, you know, what parents would be actually committing to and consequences if the form is not signed.
And then there's the enforcement piece. Yeah, I just, you know, even if this isn't in place yet, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about possible consequences for non-compliance. With any of these parts. Again, just knowing that this has to be, everyone has to be on board to make this work.
Yes, and we actually reached out to our attorney for that as well because that is something we need legal advice on. But I couldn't agree with you more. We need everyone to commit to this in order for it to work.
And then I did want to ask about the, the masks. I know when we had Ms. Mathers from CHOP come and speak with us, she mentioned that valve masks. Really aren't a good option. Is, are there any mask types that we're prohibiting? Just because, I mean, as she mentioned, that type of mask, you're exhaling, you know, it's great if you're doing sanding or something where you're just trying to protect yourself. But you don't want to be exhaling your own particulate into the environment.
We haven't yet, but I, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to put together recommended masks, you know, as some kind of information for families. You know, I, this weekend I was giving blood and somebody walked in with that valve mask on and I thought, oh no. Because, you know, if, but if it wasn't for Ms. Mathers, I wouldn't have known that. So I think it is a good idea to get that information to families so they are aware of the information we know because we've been. Going through this every week with the professionals we've had.
Okay, that's making me think school supply lists will include masks on them as well. So.
Yes, they will. Yes, they will.
The reality.
Encouraging families to, you know, as we mentioned before, we will have a supply. Because we don't want any child to be, you know, be upset because they forgot a mask and feel they can't come in. We will absolutely have a supply, but we just believe it's better all around, you know, for the children to have their own and more than one. What, when they, when they come to school, more than one is a fact.
Definitely. And then I just want to clarify about the face shields and the face mask. Again, referencing Ms. Mathers' comment, she mentioned that the face shield is most effective if there's a mask worn under it. Are we saying that it's okay for students to just wear a face shield?
We are because of the order. So the order that we, you know, that's what we're using. The order says face coverings and that's defined as mask and or shield. But again, as part of that education on, just like that valve mask is not effective. A mask and a shield is more effective than a face shield. And, you know, that's information we can get out to families.
Okay, great. And just, I know there's one part of the plan, I don't want to go through every line of the document, but it mentioned that staff meetings. May also be held, that was the wording, may also be held in a virtual format. I just wanted to get a sense of where the administration's at. I mean, I personally, I would prefer for adults to be meeting virtually. Just based on what we know about COVID transmission and the impact on adults.
So for the most part, our staff meetings will be virtual. I'll give you a good example. In the Pupil Services Department, right now, there's a lot of logistics we're trying to work out and we are. Pulling our hair out, trying to do that in each of our homes away from each other. And so we say, can we just meet in person? And so, you know, in the next week, we'll be using the room where we normally have executive session for people spaced very far apart. So that we can kind of in-person tackle some logistics because we just, we need to do that.
Right. Okay. All right, that makes sense. I just want to see, might be one other question here. So I know that self-reporting is a big piece of this as well. In terms of if you have any COVID symptoms or if your child is sick. I know we have a small, you know, multilingual family population in the district, but what resources are we using to. Ensure that those families are aware of the protocols and procedures for self-reporting and that they have language access in those situations?
So it actually, the Chester County Department of Health, the CD, well, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong state. The CDC and the PA Department of Health have a tremendous amount of documents and information packets that are translated for us already. So we've been utilizing those and gathering them together for different scenarios. And that's really, for the most part, everything we would need is in those documents.
All right, that's all for my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. Next up, Ari.
Thanks, Larry, and thank you, Nicole, for that presentation. We really, really appreciate you taking us through the. Health and Safety Template Document Plan for PDE at that high level. As was mentioned just a week ago. There are going to be seven building-specific plans built, developed, and then. Presented to the community. When can we expect those plans? I know we have, what, about a month until the first day of school?
I want to just step back for a minute, only, I don't want any misunderstanding of the word plan out in the community, Mr. Fleischer. There will not be a document that, you know, is the plan for the building. The, the building principals will now be taking all of these requirements. And then we'll be looking at, all right, when we do it, when we have students entering the building, this is what the process will be. When we are doing a staggered dismissal, this is what the process will be. Communicating to parents at the, you know, at the elementary level. Children who's, even though there are only, you know, half of the student population in the building. Children whose last names begin with A and C will be picked up at three o'clock, you know, 3:10, the next group. So it, it will not all be in one comprehensive document. They will now take this and put it into their processes and the protocols that they have, have in the building. And all that communication now, most of it is going to be coming from the building principals, less from, from central office. I mean, I have communication going out tomorrow and I'm sure, you know, we'll send a few things out before the start of the school year. But it's going to come predominantly from the building principal about the specifics.
Great. When, when do you think the community can expect to see those from their principals is my question?
I, I would not. I mean, it's, August 1st is Saturday, we're scheduled to start on August 31st. You know, they usually begin their communication mid-August, you know, to parents to let, to let them know. So I would imagine around, you know, around that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next up, Antoinette.
Yeah, thanks. First, I just want to thank you, Nicole, so much, Dr. Ruchi, the whole team for putting this together. I went through all 50, 60 pages of it and you can really see. How much effort was put into this, you know, and people who have been following along at home. Have seen the board meetings and, you know, and obviously. Know that you've consulted experts and, and, and thought and deliberated about all of this so much, but there's so much that's going on. Behind the scenes. So I just want to thank you all for that first. My question is mostly regarding, you know, obviously, Dr. Ruchi said it in her remarks, Nicole, you mentioned it, the situation is very fluid. And so, you know, we're learning more about the virus and how it's transmitted. You know, I think. Just about all different, you know, the guidance that's been coming out usually at board meeting times to change. You know, we're getting all of that. And so I guess, I just want to know how. How do we go about the necessary changes that may come up? For the health and safety plan, either because guidance changed, because information regarding transmission has changed. You know, that sort of thing. If they come out with some sort of new mask that works, anything like that, you know. Does it need a formal vote on change? You know, how do we communicate to the public? What has changed in the health and safety plan and why it has changed? And so, you know, if you could just go through some of the different steps. That if, if any changes are needed, we would, we would go through.
Sure, I'll start that one off and then Nicole, if there's anything you want to add in there. So if there were to be an order that would come from the governor's office or the, you know, this secretary of health, similar to what came from, from masking. That would certainly require a lot of communication, but it would not require a vote from the board. If over the next week or so, you know, we look at the data and we get. You know, have a call with the Chester County Department of Health and the guidance there is, you guys really need to think twice. About, you know, a, a hybrid opening. We think you should give some strong consideration to a virtual opening. If that, now that change, we would come back to you and there would be a vote on that. But, so anything that would be mandated, but that technically wouldn't be mandated to us, it would be guidance that they would say, we're looking around. We see where you are in Delaware County. And we, you know, think you should give that some consideration.
And I'll hop in there. I purposely linked some of the guidance because it kept changing. So that, you know, now we're referencing, we will follow the guidance with a link so that as it changes. You know, the website would change and then it's, it's there because it changed, I think, a couple of times.
I guess, and I think that's, I think that's great. I guess my question with that would be. You know, what is then the communication that goes out because of that? You know what I mean? And so either because. The. If, if the communication has to then go to the, the building principals to make sure that they know to implement it. Or if the communication is, is more community-based where, you know, okay, now there's an extra question. You know, that you need, that the parents need to ask for COVID symptoms, that sort of thing. So I think that's great. To link it and I, and I totally understand the rationale behind it, but I guess my concern would be. Folks wouldn't know that it changed.
Yeah, if it changes a process or a procedure in the school, then the communication would have to go out. And, you know, guidelines for how that process will work in the schools or at home would have to go out. The bulk of that link from Chester County is the quarantining information. So that isn't necessarily something we would be telling families to begin with, but it's something families would want to know. But anything that would change a procedure in our district, we'd have to communicate that.
Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you all so much. I appreciate all the work and effort into this.
Thank you.
Next up, Bridgette.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I had. Read the draft and submitted a bunch of, of comments, questions and appreciate seeing them incorporated. But one I just wanted to highlight because there has been a lot of attention on the, kind of the shared responsibility of families and students. To do the reporting of symptoms and possible COVID cases. Just to be clear that when we talk about that, that is for students that are enrolled in our school buildings and not kind of. Someone who's in Havreford Online. And I, my, I guess a question also is, would it apply if we were in. Instruction to go to 100% virtual, would the community still have that responsibility to be reporting like that?
Not to us, no. They would be reporting to the Chester County Department of Health. It only impacts us if they're coming into our buildings because then we have to put other pieces into play. But if they're at home and have been at home, then no, they don't need to report it to us.
Okay. Next up, Susan.
There I am. Okay. I want to congratulate you on this amazing body of work. This has been astounding to me, having worked in the field for 40 years. I congratulate you all on a job well done. I'll be honest with you, my concern is masks. As a former teacher and principal, you know, I, I always hear that here comes the exception. As a former teacher and principal, you know, I always hear that here comes the exception, yeah, but my child this, or my child that. And I didn't hear you say anything about this is the law, this is required. And mostly, I think we need to speak to the parents about it even more than the children. You know, teachers can handle their classrooms unless they have those little slips of paper from the principal that say, well, Bobby doesn't have to wear one because he sneezes into it. Do you know what I mean? I'm interested to know how we're going to make sure these guys have their masks.
So, one, the enforcement of masks is something we're consulting with our attorneys about. But two, the order and the newest PDE guidelines from July 16th, they make it a little bit more concrete that masks are absolutely required unless there's a documented disability and that has to be documented through a 504 or an IEP that prohibits the child from wearing a mask. So before, it did not say that. It was, you know, if you don't, you know, if you're not going to wear a mask, you're not going to wear a mask and we can't ask questions. But now, it's saying that if you're not wearing a mask, you need documentation and we need to have that documentation. So it's much stronger as of July 16th.
Thanks Nicole.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kristin, another question?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the childcare piece of the health and safety plan. I know that before and after-school care is a big concern for a lot of parents whose children will be participating in the hybrid model. I know we're saying that we're asking childcare providers to follow our health and safety plan. How are we going to enforce that? And how are we going to have space to make sure that these children who need this before and after care are maintaining six-foot distancing?
So we've actually met with the provider that, you know, is housed in our district. And that was a discussion, because at first they were talking about the childcare guidelines, which are different from school guidelines. So in childcare facilities, they just have to cohort, they don't have to maintain six feet. But because they're using our buildings, they will have to abide by six feet. We talked about numbers with the hybrid model and the space we have available, and they felt they had enough space to use six feet. We told them basically when we had the table set up, what we knew, we could fit in certain spaces, like Manoa's cafeteria. And they said it matched almost perfectly. They had a little bit more space even possibly based on their typical enrollment from year to year.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Dave?
Thanks, just a quick follow-up to Ms. Benji's question, actually. I wanted to, hold on a second here. Sorry, okay, there I am. It's just a quick follow-up. And first of all, like I feel what my board members, my fellow board members have said, it's the great document. I went through the whole thing. It's very well put together. And I can't express my appreciation enough. It was a lot of work. Just one clarification. So if there is a student who has a documented medical condition, I don't know what those could be, but where they cannot wear a mask, if they have like a paper saying, I can't wear one, what steps are we going to take? Are we going to allow them in classes with some kind of separation? Is, or will they be asked to do more online? I'm just kind of curious what the protocol would be if that case does arise?
Right, so we are going to provide more PPE for staff. So when you're talking about a student who can't wear a mask because of a disability, typically, we're talking about students who may need more adult support in the building. So we've actually reached out to the Chester County Department of Health about that. You know, we said, you know, these students are going to need probably close physical contact and may not be able to wear a mask. And we got some guidance from them on how to best approach that. And we're going to meet with our instructional aides about that to give them kind of, you know, the guidance from Chester County. But additional PPE, like, you know, if people were just wearing a mask, we might say, well, let's wear a face shield and a mask. Gloves will be provided. But we've looked at different precautions we can take in that scenario. But those students, now if there's a health concern where they're really concerned that they might get sick, that's when we say Haverford Online is something that we would strongly encourage a family to look at.
But they can't just say, I refuse to wear one and?
No, so that's, I was talking about July 16th. Again, we have a board meeting when PDE updated that guidance, that made it a lot stronger for school districts to say that it has to be documented.
Okay, well, this again, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board at this time? Thanks, everybody, for your questions and thank, thank you Nicole and everyone who worked on the plan for the past few months. I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, we are actively seeking to get clarification and a better understanding of the latest data that's been reported regarding Delaware County. And we will do our best to digest that information and keep everybody updated. And I certainly want to mention that, you know, depending on the guidance that we receive, it's not inconceivable that our plan could change dramatically in a short period of time. So thanks for your patience and for bearing with us on that. Next item on our agenda is a lease purchase agreement resolution. I'll accept a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing proper officers of the board to execute the lease purchase agreement with respect to the leasing and possible acquisition and purchase of certain equipment.
Right, man moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we just have, just a quick summary of what this is?
Yes. This is an approval of the lease that we also approved in June, but we had to send it to our bond counsel for to get a review of the agreement. And they made some adjustments and we're just sending it back for approval a second time. But it has to do with their $1.5 million technology lease that we approved back in June.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Kristin moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the School District of Haverford Township Health and Safety Plan and authorize submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Larson moved. Kristin?
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So thanks, everybody, again. I'll accept a motion to approve the School District of Haverford Township Emergency Instructional Time Plan pursuant to Section 520.1 of the Public School Code and authorize submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for approval.
Larson moved.
Benji, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Could someone sum up for the public what this document entails?
Certainly, Ms. Larson, thank you for asking. This is a, actually a time document and identifying what the schedule that we're going to our, if we use the hybrid model, that we have 50% of the students returning for in-person learning, 50% of the week, they would be at home. So we just break it up into cohort A attends in-person school Monday and Wednesday. Cohort B attends in-person school Tuesday and Thursday with both cohorts learning from home on Friday. And ensures that our number of instructional days and the time that we are required to meet, that we will adhere to that during this plan.
Thank you. And how do the hours that students will be completing, the instructional hours students will be completing under this emergency plan, how do they compare to, quote-unquote, "normal times"?
We are anticipating that they are going to be the equivalent of normal times. One of the features of Canvas, actually, you will know when the student logs on, how long the work that the student engaged in, when they were in that, in the course. So that, and that will help us also with taking attendance.
Okay, that was my next question about attendance. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks again. Board reports. Ari, you got anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
Antoinette?
Again, I just want to thank everyone for all of the work that they've put in. And I had the opportunity I had the opportunity to attend some of the information sessions this week, and I thought they were really well done. So I also want to just commend the building principals for all the work that they're doing as well. Really appreciated. And, you know, I don't think anybody signed up for this. And I think, you know, we all understand, I hope that we understand all of the work that's going into it. So just would like to extend my thanks to everyone.
Great, thanks, Antoinette. Dave, anything?
Just echoing the thanks that, as Antoinette said, I also want to send my thanks to Mr. Mullen. We were told before the meeting executive session that you were a great rep for HT EA, and you certainly did not disappoint. So thank you very much for your help. And I want to extend all of our thanks to the teachers. We, you know, we don't take the decisions that we're making about the reopening plan, safety plans lightly. We take them very, very seriously. And as you said eloquently, you know, we we look forward to working with you as well. So thank you very, very much. And we, you know, I've sent it also to the rest of the community. We do look forward to moving on this journey and can, you know, rolling it, rolling this thing together. So that we all act that way. Thank you very much.
Kristin?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the community for their patience as the district works through this and the board asks questions. I mean, there's really no easy answers. There, you could even argue there are no right answers in this situation. So just thank you for your patience and flexibility as we go along with this. And I also wanted to thank, similar to my colleagues, thank district administration and staff for all their hard work in putting the plan together. And I'm sure the countless sleepless nights, I work in a neighboring district and we've been mulling over similar questions. And it's just a lot. And I never, as an educator or board member, thought I would ever have to grapple with these issues. And I'm, I can guarantee most of my education colleagues are in a similar position. So thank you, everyone. And we are moving into even more uncharted territory. You know, if the hybrid plan does come to fruition, education is going to look a lot different. It's, I mean, it will be a new normal. You know, kids wearing masks and teachers wearing masks in classrooms and all the different protocols that are in place, this is, it's serious. But I appreciate that there is an attempt being made to bring, you know, our children together in person to get some socialization. But also just to warn people that this is not without risk. So again, just thank you, everyone, for your flexibility and patience as we work through this together.
Laura?
Yes, I'm the mom of a preschooler and I'm on the school board and I'm a college professor. And I feel like I'm getting it from all sides as we restart everything in a month. I think it's going to be a really bumpy ride. And, you know, there's no right answers, but you know, just, we do the best we can with what we have. And I think that personally, I've really, really appreciated all of the experts that we've brought in, that Dr. Ruchi and her team have brought in that we could talk with. I know that that, for me, has helped me think through some of these issues and some of the risks and ways that we could be as safe as possible. So I really appreciate the opportunity and for the community to hear from those experts as well. So that's been really, really valuable. So thank you again. And just, everybody, wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, and hopefully we'll, you know, we'll make it to September. So, thanks.
Great. Sal?
No report.
Susan?
I'm going to give a quick shout-out to Mike Mullen. I have worked in Haverford in my, most of my career for forty years and have always been very, very proud of our community. But Mr. Mullen tonight showed me why I've always been so proud of our community. I believe in hope, I believe in faith, and I believe in trust. Trust has always been one of my words. And I trust our teachers, I trust our administrators, I trust our parents, and most of all, I trust our kids to know and to understand. So whatever is decided on August 31st, I congratulate Mike Mullen in helping us to codify how this can look as a community. Thank you.
Great. Bridgette?
I want to echo the appreciation for all of the time and thought and the ability of the administration and all the staff to to take in all the recommendations and guidance and suggestions and ideas that people lobbed at them and to put it into a really thoughtful and balanced plan that puts health and safety at the forefront and also maintains those things that make school special and something that, you know, all of our kids and families really value and want to see continue in the best way possible. And I hope this plan is something that assures our whole school community that all those best efforts have gone into it. And I'm rooting for Delco that our viral numbers start to improve. Everybody wear the masks and use the hand sanitizer and stay home when you can. I also want to encourage anyone who hasn't seen the Q&amp;A sessions that were done by the elementary principals, the middle school and the high school, to watch those and watch them with your kids. There's, they're long, there's a lot of information over the hour and a half. But I think that will put some more of the kind of context and how-tos that, as was described tonight, the health and safety plan is, was very particular and focused in, you know, the content it had to cover. But those Q&amp;A sessions kind of brought what school could look like under the hybrid plan to life. And definitely recommend that in keeping up with the the website and the FAQs. And also just a reminder that those parent preference surveys are requested to be submitted here this weekend. So if you haven't submitted it yet, please take the time to fill that in. That feedback about enrollment, lunches and busing will help us make all these subsequent decisions about the implementation of, you know, how we'll be able to have school roll out on 31st. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. The board met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to review collective bargaining issues and also met on July 23rd, 2020 to review personnel matters, including an employee discipline issue and collective bargaining issues. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on August 6th, 2020. I'd like to point out that that'll be the fifth Thursday in a row of board meetings. At present, we don't anticipate adding additional meetings in August. We're scheduled to meet Thursday, August 6th and Thursday, August 20th. So if, and if that should change, we'll certainly keep you posted.
And Larry, could we just confirm that that will be held by Zoom?
Yes, those will, until further notice, these meetings will be held by Zoom. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everyone. We're out of here.
We're 10 o'clock, alright.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
See you next week.